Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Willow's Planning Commission meeting. Today's date, September 2nd, 2025, located at Willow City Hall and the time is 6:00 PM. It's time to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Chair Brought.
Present.
Vice Chair Coram.
Here.
Commissioner Ocampo. And Commissioner Nygaard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Thank you. Item five, Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be approved with a single vote unless removed for separate discussion by the Chair and Commissioners. Individuals wishing to speak on consent items or matters not on the agenda are asked to complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk. All remarks shall be directed to the Chair and council members and are limited to three minutes. By law, the council cannot discuss or take, excuse me, take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? And you don't need a speaker's card tonight? No? Okay, thank you. Next up is item A for the minutes approval. Recommended action, approve the minutes of the August 5th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. We have a motion or a correction?
I move to accept them.
My second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes and the minutes have been approved. Thank you. Item six, Discussion and Action Calendar. All matters on the Discussion and Action Calendar will be discussed and acted on individually. Individuals wishing to speak on these items are asked to complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk. Comments should be directed to the Chair and Commissioners and are limited to three minutes. By law, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Item A is a rezone. File RZ-25-01 and General Plan Amendment, file number GPA 25-01, 103 South Pluma Street. Does the staff wish to talk about this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright. Good evening. I'm Amy Rossig with Harrison Associates. So the item before you is a rezone and a general plan amendment as you stated for 103 South Pluma Street. Uh, next slide please. So just to orient yourself, the project site is located on the southwest, southwest corner of Sycamore Street and Pluma Street. The project site is about 0.43 acres in size. Next slide please. So here are some site photographs. The project site is developed with a structure that was originally constructed in 1920 as a single-family residence, along with a detached two-car garage, which you can see in the image on the bottom. The property is presently used as an office for the property owner's law firm. However, the owner wishes to additionally use the building as their residence. There is an existing kitchen on the first floor. The project site is currently zoned central commercial. In this zoning district, residential uses are only permitted on the second story when the first story contains a non-residential use. So to comply with those zoning ordinance, the property owner would be required to construct a kitchen on the second floor, which the property owner has stated to staff that that would be financially infeasible. So what's being proposed today is to rezone the property into multiple residence professional office, also known as RP, on the zoning map on the screen that's identified as that orange, light orange color. This would allow the property owner to use the property as their residence and maintain a professional office. This rezone is consistent with surrounding parcels. Um, as you can see on the zoning map, the properties to the southeast on Pluma Street are already zoned RP. And then just across the street to the north, um, just above Sycamore Street, those parcels are also zoned RP. Also, as part of this project, there's no construction that is proposed, so this would not alter the character or development pattern of the neighborhood. Uh, next slide please. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation of approval to rezone the property and to do a general plan amendment. And I'm available for any questions that the commission has.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Would you like to come up please so we can? That way everybody that's watching us on TV can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. I am the owner of the property and I do wish to live there and maintain my law office there. That's seems to be the best use of the property now. I've owned it for, uh, since, uh, 2016. But, and we tried to use it commercially and at this point, it seems the residential use is the best for my purposes and of course to maintain my law office. That's the size of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Coram?
Yeah, how many acres did you say was on this property?
0.43.
Okay, 0.43. I thought you said, I missed the zero point. And I thought, that's about four acres.
Commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nygaard?
I do not. It's a beautiful building. I do not have any questions.
I, I just have one question. I live on the 200 block. Does that prevent me from voting or anything of South Pluma?
I would say being a, a block removed from it and not within that, not owning a commercial property in that general vicinity, I, I think we could be okay. The most, we did not, uh, run it by the city attorney for that.
I never even thought about it. Just now.
I don't, uh, I, I think with you being removed enough from there and it, it not bringing a business or you having a, a, any competitive interest in that area.
For financial.
Or financial, thank you.
And a.
Commissioner Coram? Yeah. I, I think you're far enough removed from it that there's no financial interest to be gained.
Thank you. Do you have any further comments?
Nope.
Chair would entertain a motion?
I do have a question. Do you want, uh, two motions or can they all, can these two things be in one motion?
One motion cover it all? It's going to be the resolution, uh, recommending the general plan amendment. And then the, the second piece of it.
The rezone?
Rezone itself.
I was only thinking one motion, just because they kind of go together. You can't really do one without the other.
Yep.
That was the main reason why I thought.
That's fine with, that works for me.
Kind of marrying them together.
If you just read the title of the resolution, it would cover it all.
Thank you.
I can go ahead and motion.
It's your turn.
Thank you. I motion to approve the rezone, file number RZ 2501 and general plan amendment, file number GPA 25-01 at 103 South Pluma Street.
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution, so do we need to do a roll call vote?
No.
No?
Unless you want to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes three to zero. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, next up is item B, Wayfinding Sign Design Review. Recommended action, provide direction on the preferred wayfinding sign style and related design elements based on the attached mockups. Attachment two. Thank you. Or one, I'm sorry. Need new glasses. Staff?
Uh, good evening. So in front of you, yes, we, we recently went to the, the city council, uh, with the, well, as you can tell by the background, it's kind of been going back and forth where, for quite a while. Um, we had GILL funds that have been left over for quite some time, which initially paid for a sign on, uh, the Butte Street and Wood Street corner. Uh, it's actually kind of on the corner of Butte, points to downtown. Uh, Carleen, can you bring up that?
Which one?
That, that stick. It's got pictures on it.
Yes.
Okay.
You want the mockups or the?
Just the existing wayfinding signs. We'll start with that. Sorry, I didn't see that.
No, that's fine.
Just so we can kind of browse them while we, we go through here. So here's the current way, but yep, those are good. I know you guys have pictures, but digital will hopefully work. So the two, there's, there's four main ones total, two being, uh, to the, one to the east, one to the west of Lassen Street, pointing to the civic center downtown, uh, doing those arrows. And then there's another one of similar nature that is on the corner of Sycamore and Tahama Street. Uh, there's the one to the west of Lassen, the one to the east of it looks almost identical. Then scroll down and you'll see there's the one very similar again on the corner of Sycamore and Tahama Street. And the next one will be the GILL sign, which has a different look to it on the corner of Butte and Wood Street, um, with the fire department and a historic downtown instead of the, um, civic center and library like the other signs have. We're really looking to kind of use the same four things on each of our signs. And then we've got one more, just little independent museum sign, which is right out here on the corner of Walnut and Lassen. Uh, we may choose to keep that or kind of modify that with one of the larger signs itself. So those are existing wayfinding signs. I'm pretty out of date, pretty not good-looking. Um, so we've got money, like I said, the GILL funds totaling $4,729. And then also we were awarded a PG&E grant, um, to improve our wayfinding side, signs for economic development purposes. So with that, we've got about $9,500 to spend, or sorry, $9,700 to spend on updating these wayfinding signs. We haven't been out to get estimates yet, but we feel this is more than enough to cover at a minimum of replacement of the four. Um, in the staff report, you'll also see, uh, three other suggested locations. And those would be to capture our I-5 off-ramps at Road 57 and on Wood Street. Have them facing the off-ramps coming towards Willow's to let people know there's a town on 57. And then off I-5, just to point them to the downtown area. And then the other potential location you'll see was kind of more of a, a downtown side, um, that would kind of actually split off and, and show people civic center downtown. And that was proposed, um, if I get this right here, at the corner on Lassen Street at, at Walnut or at Sycamore, pointing to the, uh, sorry, at Sycamore Street. And or Oak Street, I have it here. Anyway, something in that, that general vicinity that says museum back up this way and downtown that way. Um, I think I had it on these maps move on me sometimes. More thinking of Sycamore Street pointing towards downtown and then up Lassen, saying that the civic center and other things are, are that way. Um, but with that, we've got some design mockups we'll put up here for you. We're just looking for any opinion. These mockups are not anything set in stone. So if you like the font of another, the color of another, and the, the design of another, we'll get that all blended for you. Any recommendations you don't see on here, we'll try to incorporate that and make it work. Um, and if you have any thoughts on the, the location, uh, or placement of those signs or hierarchy of how the, what should be listed first, you know, civic center instead of library or downtown first. And obviously the arrow direction will change depending on, on where they're pointing. Um, yeah, so we're open to all suggestions and if we have, if funding allows, we'll, we'll look for doing signs at the I-5 off-ramps and adding that, um, it's going to be quote dependent. If we have extra money or if we, if we come back under, this is part of a larger sign project that was $40,000 for replacement of all the stop signs in Willow's and the name signs that are, a lot of them are faded out. So if we have extra money from those bids coming in low or extra money in general, we're going to be look at, uh, purchasing some kind of classic looking poles instead of your standard, um, square or round poles to try to give it even more of a historic classic feel. Um, so with that, plenty of talking on my end. I will, I'll pass it over to you guys for any recommendations you may have on location, design, or hierarchy of, of what we're listing or additional things to list.
Thank you.
Yep.
That sounds nice. Any comments from our public? Do you have any comment?
I do. I love the, the project, upgrading signs. Um, I don't know how you want to go about hearing my two cents about fonts, colors and whatnot. Are we just going to do that now? Sure.
We'll bring up, I'm going to bring up a picture of the mockups too, so I can, that way I can verify that I'm following the correct pieces to this puzzle. Oh no, you're good. I just need a visual reference.
I do want to point out that I think you brought up a very good point that I think, and, and maybe everybody else can chime in on this, but about downtown maybe being first, civic center, library, museum. I, I didn't think of that, but that's probably a good idea. But I do like the icon up top for this one. There you go. I do like that. I think that's more rural. And then I do like the green and brown. This one here. That one. I like the colors. Um, I don't care for the icon on that because it looks like, um, Long's in New Orleans.
It does look like the New Orleans Saints. I picked up on that.
All have, so it just, it's, you can read it. I think it's a good visual.
Alright, so green and brown with that font and then the agriculture logo.
I do like this brown and cream or it's brown, right?
Yeah.
I do like that one as well. And the, uh, icon on top is, is fine. Uh, I think I prefer the rural looking one. But I really like this color match. And I think that's it. The last blue one, didn't care for it. And I guess I like the shape of the green one and the cream and brown one.
Okay. Perfect.
That is my two cents.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Keith, do you have any comment?
Yes. Uh, I like the green one and the blue one. I, uh, I like the green one in that it has city of in a little smaller font. People know they're entering a community of some kind, so you want the name to really come out.
Stick out.
That little, whatever it is up on the top. I think we ought to have a Willow tree. We were known for Willow's. That was part of our heritage, the trees, rather than some obscure sign that means nothing to anybody. One of my other concerns, and you mentioned it, that there would be some replacement of street signs. There are a lot of street signs that are totally unreadable because they have faded off. And the thing that I have noticed in, in larger communities, especially when you come off of the freeway, they are, they're double the size of what ours are. Many of them are lighted, some are not. I think, uh, Wood Street especially needs to have larger street signs. So at night you can read them, uh, with your lights on dim. I've many, many times, not here, but in other small communities, uh, had to pull off the side of the road and wait till the cars passed by to put my lights on bright so I could see the street sign. I think they are as important as these, uh, what are they called? Uh, direct awayfinding signs. Uh, that's basically my comment. I know, you know, we don't think about a lot of this because we live here. You ask me where somebody lives, I probably couldn't give you the street address, but I could take you there. If I know them. And, uh, you know, we have to, in all of our deliberations on helping our community, I think we have to think like, this is our first time here. How do I get to where? And make it readable and, uh, large enough to see easily. Uh, especially on Wood Street, maybe even Sycamore. They need to be a little bit larger. That's just my opinion. Uh, I don't know what others think, so. The, when you get back into the neighborhoods, it's probably not as critical. But coming off of Wood Street, if you want to turn down Lassen or Pluma or Butte, you got to be able to see that sign.
Definitely. And I think we will, what I see too for Wood Street and Tahama as well is we've got larger speed limits on those streets. Um, and I know, I know the downtown corridor, you know, we want those too, but maybe we can look into at, at a minimum, if budgeting allows doing the Wood Street, all of those signs in a larger font, maybe even look at some, some more reflective or lighted ones for that quarter. When I first brought this to council or before I did, I think, uh, I was corrected on this. I thought, sometimes Caltrans has the authority over the street name signs. They don't, in this case, ours are independent poles. The stop signs are Caltrans's responsibilities, but, um, through talking to them, discovered that we are responsible for those street signs, so therefore we can spec them to grade or better, which would be the larger sign. So we will keep that in mind when we go out to bid. And just to, uh, clarify, Commissioner Coram, when, when we were discussing the blue sign, we do have two, two blue signs, um, I want to make sure I get the right one.
I think I only have one blue sign.
They're on the other side of.
Well, I've looked on both sides.
Maybe you had a page. Can you bring those mockups up, Carleen?
Oh, right here.
This one?
This one and then this one. This one doesn't have any, uh, pictures or anything.
I know, it's, it's a larger, um, you can zoom out of that PDF if you want, but I just want to clarify that on the top of it, you'll have that minus button. Left, left.
On the back, it's green. See that's for the.
Other ones are going to be really small now.
Maybe, maybe. Yeah, that's another page.
No, I don't have.
Missing?
Missing a page in the packet?
Think so.
Was it, was it this one you were referencing or was it the other blue one?
Do you want to know if you like that?
It's this one.
Perfect. Yep, noted.
But if we can change that little area.
Yeah, to do the Willow.
To a Willow tree.
I like that idea.
Yep. We played around with.
I said also, I like this one because city of in a little smaller font. And you want to emphasize the name of your city. At least I think so.
Yeah.
And I also want to commend staff, whoever put all this together for, um, giving Forest Sprague, what's the word, credit? For having started this a number of years ago. It's just unfortunate it got stalled, stalled somewhere along the way, but.
Yeah.
We're restarting it, so that's good.
And it was, you know, we had, we had that GILL funding kind of hanging out there for a while and him bringing it to the table was appreciated and we, we've got the money, let's spend it. And then having that grant come through, um, you know, something, something nice to, little economic development twist. It's not a ton of money, but can really, really make a change to the community. Yep.
So I, I kind of like some of what you said and some of what you said, and I kind of like some a little bit different. So what I was wondering is how you guys would feel about having a ad hoc committee? And both of you could be on it, um, and maybe a business member or two, a community member, if one city council member wanted to be on it, but then you guys could all sit down and, and really come up with something instead of us just piecemealing.
Yeah, um, I'm just trying to think about how that would work and if we would need to establish an ad hoc committee or if we could receive design input from, from you guys outside of this meeting without having to establish an ad hoc committee, but I'm not sure on those processes.
I think it would be, I think, I feel like both commissioners on both sides of me have really strong opinion. I mean that in a positive way. You both know what you like. And, um, I like a little bit of what both of you said, but also have a little bit of a different vision. I don't need to be on the committee, but if, I do think it's important maybe to bring in downtown business and.
Absolutely.
It's a good opportunity to bring our community together, maybe bring in one city council member, simply so we're working with the city council, but a way for us to come together.
And I don't have a, my, my thought is I would like to have as much input on this as possible within reason and with invested community members, because I don't like having to guess at things and then, you know, right? I want everybody's input and opinion. My concern would be at this point, which is fine, is that we would need to agendize and create that ad hoc committee. Or would we be able to make a motion and just do that? I don't know. But what we can do.
Is there a timeline on when this needs to happen?
I, I have to double check the PG&E grant. If I remember correctly, it's a nothing pressing. I can definitely look at that. But basically for the discussion and action portion of this, and let me not lie, so I'm just going to make sure I'm reading it. I believe that the, the action itself was just, uh, receive direction regarding the wayfinding signs, provide direction.
On the preferred wayfinding sign style and related design element.
Yep. And I've.
Like something that.
I've received that, I've received that direction. I think I've got a good sign. I, I think that if you wanted to make a motion to establish an ad hoc committee consisting of, um, planning commission members, city council, that maybe we could bring, bring that item back.
Okay.
So we might have to bring that back to create that ad hoc committee, uh, but maybe what we could do is, is just do a special meeting with that being the agenda item when at a time and place convenient for everybody. I don't think it would require a public notice or anything for that. So with that direction, I can get that agendized and work with you guys on scheduling that as soon as possible.
I'll, I'll make the motion and we'll see, I don't, we'll see how.
I don't think it's going to hurt to make the motion and then we'll just, and then we'll just, uh, if we need to come back, we'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah, does that sound good?
I'll make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee with two, um, planning commissioners. I'd like to, I don't know if I have to nominate, but I'd like to request that the two commissioners that are on it are Keith Coram and Bobby Nygaard. And, uh, one council member and a business owner. Or maybe two business owners.
Okay, two business owners.
So I'll say two business owners. I'll keep my motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make that motion.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Bobby, did you vote?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't.
I'll say it at the same time.
Let's go to trouble for that.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. And we'll follow up.
Let us know.
Absolutely. It shouldn't take a, you know, a day or two to hear back on what we need to do. Yep. And then, yeah, so we'll, if we're good to go, then we'll establish the ad hoc committee. If we need to do anything else, I'll bring that information back to you and we'll make, we'll work around if we can make that happen as soon as possible. And then in the meantime, I'll try to come up with some more mockups with the little bit of direction I had, just to present and be kind of worked out some more.
I know you have a lot to do and I apologize for that, but I think that this is something that's the visual. We all have an interest in making our town look better and.
It'll probably give me less to do because I won't be trying to think about exactly what I should do. So no, I, I really do appreciate it. I don't like, I'm not a design major and I, I want all the input that I can get on these things. Because at the end of the day, look how long it's been since we had these other wayfinding signs up. I want them to be done right. I want the look to it.
And we could get some community buy-in.
Absolutely. It never, never hurts.
A good point.
Yep.
That does not, uh, little transparency.
Absolutely. And, uh, it's.
And work with our council also.
Yep. Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Yep.
You just want someone to share in the blame with you.
And the success. No. At the end of the day, like I said, I, I appreciate all that input though, um, and coming up with the logo at the top and different things like that. Like some, there's going to be some good ideas that different people have that go, that makes sense. Just like the Willow tree idea today. It's, uh, you know, unthought of, but more input the better. No, we don't have to go with it. At the end of the day, they had a hot committee will decide, but, um, no, I'm, I'm totally for that.
I'm excited to see it comes back.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll get it. Definitely, no matter what, we'll end up with something better than we have. That's for sure.
Thank you. Item seven, comments and reports, commission comments and reports. Keith, do you have any comments?
Nothing, thank you.
And I also don't have any, any staff comments and reports?
Uh, just that Commissioner Valencia has stepped down from her spot, so I want to, uh, thank her for her time on the planning commission. It is a, uh, not a very, um, yeah. It's a thankless job. You guys are up here making the hard decisions, um, kind of, and, and taking that on with, with no, um, really good pats on the back for it. So I appreciate you guys. I appreciate her time. Um, hers is just a time of not having enough time, which I totally understand. She loved being a part of this and loved having her in, uh, support of the community and help us get through some of these decisions. So other than that, I don't believe I have anything else at this time.
Yeah. I'd like to second that. It was, I really enjoyed getting to know her and working with her, so I wish her well. Okay.
It'd say she might come back too, if she has more time. So in three years, I'm sending her an email and checking. It says she might come back too, if she has more time. So in three years, I'm sending her an email, checking in on that.
Okay, item eight is adjournment, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting at 6:30 PM and I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yep, absolutely. And I think, uh, yeah, if we have any other thing.